All right, so let me go ahead and call this meeting together of the Kuzbe Public School Board Directors, December 13th, 2021, about 5:40. And let's go ahead and let me go ahead and take a roll and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I guess that's the order I can do it. So, Arnie?
I'm here.
I'm here as well. Kim is giving the thumbs up. I guess I don't know if that's official or not, but we'll call it good. Kevin? Kevin hasn't joined us yet. Adrian? Diane?
I'm here.
Diane? And Dustin?
Here.
All right. Now, let's go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I think everybody should have a copy of tonight's agenda. So, like, could you not? Oh, well, I could fire my computer if necessary.
They're printing.
They're printing. We'll have a copy of the agenda soon.
As soon as we're done.
So, what is it? Ask for motion?
How do we approve the agenda?
Thank you, Arnie. So, Dustin? Any discussion on the agenda? Motion? Right, I'll call for vote again. Arnie?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Kim? With a thumbs up from Kim. Adrian?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
And Dustin?
Aye.
All right, and so the agenda is carried. All right, so the next, first item on that part of our agenda is to go ahead and dismiss to executive session to consider the dismissal or disciplining of, or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or agent unless he or she requests an open meeting, which is not the case here tonight. That's ORS 192.660, Question 2B. So, we'll go ahead and break to executive session.
Hi, Diane. I just got my sound to work. Oh, now I can't hear you.
Do you have the, Kim? We're gonna go, do you have the meeting for the executive session?
Okay.
So, you guys will go out of this meeting and go into the executive session call, and then we'll come back to this one.
Okay, so we need to sign out and then come back in. Okay. Hey, Sarah, are you in there? Can you hear me?
I'm gonna run this, grab the stuff I printed really quick.
Okay.
You guys can, I'll have it recorded.
Who can go? Is everything? All right, sounds good. All right, so we'll go ahead and reconvene back into our regular session. So, I would entertain any motions related to our discussion in executive session?
Well, Diane, was that you? Was somebody talking?
Oh, Sarah? I don't know if they can hear us.
We have people.
You say, can you hear us, Kim?
I can hear you. It just sounds like we can hear other people in the background as well.
I was muted, but I can hear the community room.
Okay, all right.
I'd like to make a motion to support the superintendent's decision regarding disciplinary matters of an employee and give him the decisions henceforth.
Thank you, Kim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Arnie. All right, any discussion on the motion? All right, go ahead and call for a vote. Arnie?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Kim?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
And Dustin?
Aye.
Motion carries. And also, just for the minutes, Kevin Dumasar is joining us. So, welcome, Dustin. Good to have you here. All right, looks like the next order on our agenda is to go ahead and approve the consent agenda. I think everybody should have a copy of the consent agenda. It includes the minutes from our November 8th board meeting. Also, acceptance of the resignation of employee and acceptance of the new hires. I think I remember on the list, we had Lisa Holmes, who was hired as a PE instructor at Sunset. Susan Jackson, who's a temp hire, fifth grade at Milcoma. There's a resignation from Carol Suwa, special ed teacher. And there was a letter with that. And also, retirement of Linda Sander. Linda's retiring at the end of the year, but she's gonna continue teaching through the end of the school year. So, those are on there as a consent agenda. So, entertain a motion around the consent agenda.
I'm making a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dustin.
I'll second.
Thank you, Adrian. Any discussion on the motion? I'll call for the vote then. Arnie?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Kim?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
And Dustin?
Aye.
And the motion on that carries as well. And that takes us to the next part of our agenda today, which is Arnie doing the MHS student update. So, welcome, Carly. Good to have you here today.
Hi, everyone. Okay, so, first off, our football team, as many of you may know, Marshfield's football team are the 4A state championships, champions.
Aye!
Grazie. They had a fundraiser at Cafe 101 this weekend to buy championship rings. And I believe that they did that by selling hoodies, sweatshirts, stuff that say 4A state champions. And then, a profit of the sales, a portion of the sales went towards their cause. Basketball has the Les Schwab Tournament this week. Girls play at 7:00 and boys play at 8:30 on Thursday. Last week, in their games against Cascade, the girls' basketball team won and the boys won in overtime. Cheer has their first competition in January, on January 8th. Choir, their first concert in two years is tonight at 7:00 in the auditorium, so, in an hour. Band had their first concert in two years last week, which is really exciting. Speech and Debate has a competition in January. I'm not sure exactly what day, but sometime in January. Journalism's second issue will come out Thursday or Friday of this week. The food drive ended last week on Friday. There wasn't much participation, but the classes that did participate did really well. So, we're really grateful about that. And lastly, we are planning a winter semi-formal, which will be January 22nd at the Old City Hall. So, we're really excited about that and to add another dance into our school year. That's all I have for today, so thank you.
Thank you. So, we get early, we can go to the choir concert tonight if we get done by 7:00. Is that right? All right.
No pressure.
I don't think it's gonna happen, but I put it out there. Any questions for Carly? Thank you much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Then we have, looks like OFCA business, and I see Alrey.
Actually, Terry is with us.
Oh, I guess we have Terry Jones. All right, Terry. Pass the buck.
She has hot hair, so please do this. Suzie, crazy hat, Diane. Hello, nice to see everybody. We have a new vice president. Our previous vice president moved to a confidential position. So, we asked out for volunteers and we set forth that together. And Crystal Davis is our new vice president. And the only other thing I really wanna say is, we finished 2021. We look forward to 2022. Hopefully, it's healthy and so forth. We also have negotiations coming up, and I do request that board people get out and meet and classify. Look. Look at the different jobs that we do. Don't go by the job descriptions that are, because they're not up to date. So please get out there, learn all the different types of classified jobs we have. And read them, let's see, I wrote notes for Val, which is probably why she can't read them. What are the responsibilities? And what is their role in improving the educational experience for our students and also their families? And what do they love about their jobs and what resources would enable them to do it better? That would really be very helpful as we head into negotiations to kind of learn why we're asking for what we ask for and what our jobs are. And how we can work together to make things even better. Anyway, happy holidays. Do you know, you have any questions?
Okay, let's see, I think next, Sarah, do you have any public input today? If anybody's interested in giving us public input, they're certainly welcome to do so, either live in person or by remote. And there's instructions for how to do that. You can certainly contact us by phone or by email if you would like to give a public comment. And we'd ask you, please try to do so by 12 o'clock of the day of the meeting so that we have some time to make sure you're on the agenda. So without there for our public. Our next agenda item is our district staff presentation, and we're playing tonight with Brian.
Okay. Davis, did you forget the CDA?
I did not, because I thought it was off.
I'm sorry, Becky, such was my association with the other.
Oh dear.
If somebody wants to speak in her stead for...
I think they have a specific item they want to talk about.
CDEA, they're welcome to do so. I apologize, we were... Yeah, please go ahead.
Oh, I think they can, yeah.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Hi, nice to see everyone. I'm January from office on the trailer of the CDA. What we're heading out now was, we're looking at how to get on the agenda. We have some new board members that may not be familiar with the work that we were doing yesterday. We had been presenting through CDA, the ideas we were gaining from our education empowerment program. And this one, I think some of you have seen it in email at least, is the Crewe Space School District DEI or Diversity Equity Inclusion Plan. Thank you. And so I'm just going to read up the top three. The mission is to promote inclusion, equity through ensuring fairness and equality, elimination of discrimination, celebration of strengths of our multicultural community, and respect for our diversity. Our vision is to empower students, families, staff, and community to be lifelong learners, responsible citizens, and stewards of the world. And our core values is to meet people where they are with patience and understanding to create a safe place to share and a welcoming atmosphere that will ensure all members of our CDSD community are treated with respect. When we started this work, we didn't realize that it was actually going to become law here in a few years. So our district being smaller, I think it's the 23, 24 school year, but it might be the year after that. So we have a little time, so we were excited to kind of get on board and a little ahead of the game. And so after doing quite a few community interviews and teacher interviews as to what were some of the maybe missing elements in our community as far as people feeling respected or treated with understanding, we came up with the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan. And I think we're all excited at the amount of the work that we've seen come across and through the district with like the poverty preparedness program. What was it called? Poverty? It was in the gym, and it really helped people understand what it takes to go through poverty. And then we have the ACEs training, and I think that the school is really going, has been going in the right direction. So with this, we were asking to be voted in as a committee. And then that would allow us to meet with board members, teachers, and people in the community during our planning times on Fridays, or different things like that. And so that's what we would like to, I'm not sure if we're ready to vote on that or how that procedure goes through. But that's what we've been talking to Mr. Trendle about and some other folks. So if you need time to read over it or have any questions, I can try to answer this.
I would guess as a board, what we probably should do is put it on for the January or future agenda so that we can post it and people can bring comment. Normally that's what we would do. So that we're not ruling on something or talking about something that people have not had an opportunity to know.
Thank you, yes.
So that's, that's fine.
Okay.
So I hear what you're asking for is us to put a committee together, a school district, a committee on diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Yes.
And then out of that will come this plan or other kinds of things. But an actual committee, like any of the other committees that we currently have.
Exactly, yes. Yeah, when I was talking, when we met with Mr. Trendle, I think one of his ideas is that it might work really well with side council being that we want all that kind of input. It might be an easy way to fit in there. And there will be, there's other laws that are coming in that may change the way it's done. And looking at the draft. So I can forward that bill to the board and so that you're really aware of what's coming in the future and can, we can have a better discussion and hopefully a better vote on, on email.
January, when we put just an all email out to the staff, we were thrilled that we got classified and certified from every building in the district who were interested in participating or who felt like they were aware of issues that we could address. So I think there's a lot of interest across the district.
Alright, thank you for informing us on the process, and we'll let you take that with you, and I'll forward some more information to Sarah. Well, you do thank you, Sarah, as much as I can. Good night, thank you.
Thank you. Brian, do you have anything?
I will run it. I just have a couple of updates here. One being, one of the things that we are currently keeping our eye on, currently struggling with, from time to time, is overall staffing within our buildings. Just due to the lack of qualified substitutes in all categories, whether it be classified, certified. Michelle Barton has done an outstanding job of trying to get more people on the sub-list, trying to get some of our, including some of our classified folks, to be able to substitute in a classroom. Therefore taking on the role of substitute teacher. But then we have to turn right around and get a substitute for them, for their, for their current job. And so it's a little bit of a hamster on a wheel kind of thing that we have going on right now. And we are able to keep up right now as far as keeping our buildings staffed, so our classrooms are staffed. I would say we're putting a lot of strain on the systems within our buildings. The, you know, the intervention systems, the reading interventions, the, those types of things, the behavior intervention systems. Things that we have done a good job of in the last few years of increasing staffing to bulk up those systems. But now we're pulling from those just to cover daily routines. And so, you know, it's a little bit of a battle right now. And I think, you know, I tip my hat to Michelle. She's doing a great job of getting people on the list. And it's, it's hard. I mean, it's a concern right now because there just isn't a lot of people. You know, we're seeing when we, when we post actual jobs to hire that the number of people applying for these jobs is dramatically down from what it's been in the past. Fortunately, we've been able to fill most all of our openings and, and, you know, we fortunately have people applying, which is good. But just be aware that it's a struggle right now. And it's, it's something that we're continually monitoring and trying to work on as we move forward. We've had days, I monitor the days as far as number of people, staff who are, who are out for various reasons. We've had days where we've had upwards of 42 staff members out on a particular day. That's a, that's a high. We're usually down in the lower 30s, you know, upper 20s. It's very common that we have five to seven positions that are not filled on a daily basis. And, and that's, you know, we're doing our best to make sure those aren't necessarily frontline positions that we absolutely have to have a body in. And like I said, that puts a strain on those other systems in our, in our, in our schools. And Terry alluded to a little bit about it. When you go around and look, folks are doing a lot of different things other than what they originally were hired to do in our district. And so the good news is, we have a lot of people willing to do that. And they're doing an outstanding job. The bad news is, we're putting people in that position and forced to put people in that position. I don't know how we, I don't know how we fix that. It's a tough one. To go along with that, there's a lot of talk about calendars. You look around the state, you see school districts talking about Fridays not having students, this and that. We, we looked at it as a, as a district. We talked a little bit about it. The implication of it is way different at the 712 level than it is at the K6 level. And we feel like, right now, we're just trying to find some out of the box ways to create some time without cancelling days of school or moving days of school to remote, learning which can in a lot of ways be more work than when they're there. You know, we're looking for some out of the box ways to make Fridays a little less stress on the system, a little less stress on people, giving them a little bit more time. Part of that is some of the professional development that we had planned to get done this year. We're hitting the brakes on and pulling back a little bit and allowing people some time in their buildings, in their classrooms. To get some of the work done that is much more difficult right now in the, in the current setting. When you're trying to plan and prepare for kids on quarantine as well as kids in your classroom, it's a, it's a lot of work. And anytime you get pulled to sub or you have a sub in your classroom or you have somebody subbing in your position, the work doesn't go away. It's just put on pause for, for the day, and you gotta come back and get that work done. So, you know, we've talked a lot about trying to take some pressure off the system. And I don't, I don't think we're at the point of changing our calendar. North Bend is considering their calendar, but their considerations are to match our calendar. They want to move their early release to Friday and make it a true two-hour early release, which they don't currently have. They're, they're trying to build in where we've got some grading days and some professional development days on the calendar, which we're trying to structure as, as much as we can for time in the classroom. And so they're really trying to mimic our calendar right now across town. So if you hear that conversation from, from, from folks over there or around that, you know, calendars are a hot topic right now. I don't know that just taking a day, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to do when you have, you know, our high school instructional minutes are right to the, right to the nut. And ODE just released last week, another, another update to the guidance and really kind of a, almost felt like it was a little bit of a slap on the hand from Superintendent Colt Gill, just talking about instructional minutes and how we are responsible for keeping those in place. And that, because there are districts out there who are taking and lopping off Fridays or going to a four-day week or whatever. And so we've kept a very conscious look at instructional minutes, particularly at the high school level. We're above the elementary level right now, which, which is a good position to be in. But just be cognizant of the, of the stress and, and things when you, when you hear that folks are stressed, well, they're stressed for time. And, and I don't know how you create more time. You can't put more hours in a day. We can just maybe restructure what we're doing within those, within those days to the best of our ability. And that's what we're working on right now. The other thing, you got my COVID update last week, just talking a little bit about the fact that we have a few more cases now in our, in our schools. We're quarantining classrooms. You know, quarantining is, is difficult sometimes. It's, parents aren't real excited about it, particularly on round three, you know, when it's the third time their classroom's been quarantined. But if we can't say for absolute certainty that students have been masked the whole time and three feet apart in a classroom, really difficult in a kindergarten, first, second grade classroom, really hard to do. And so we've quarantined classrooms. So that's, that's a difficult thing. But hopefully, we'd like to see those case numbers start to come back down again and get us in a position where we're not quarantining as much as we are currently. And I say that, we're not, it's not epidemic proportions around the district, but it's happening, two, three classrooms here, two, three classrooms there. You know, more so at the K3, K6 level. Secondary kids are, are better at staying apart and keeping their masks pulled with a reminder. They're not great. They're not, they're not perfect. But they are, they are a little bit more easy to wrangle than a classroom full of kindergarten kids and keep them apart. And with that, I want to talk a little bit about the Test to Stay program. We, we have not implemented that program yet in the district. We did sign up through the Oregon Health Authority, like other districts in our region and other districts in the state. Test to Stay is a program that Oregon Health Authority has recently pushed out to where if there's an exposure and we have a classroom that we would ordinarily quarantine X amount of people or the entire classroom, we can do the rapid test right there on the spot. If it comes up negative, they stay. They don't go home, they don't quarantine. You test that group again, day five through seven, to make sure, and then there is no quarantine in that situation. That's what Test to Stay program is, is all about. Problem right now, not enough tests to be able to pull that off. We've ordered them, as have others around our region. Nobody has received them yet. Although we keep getting told, there are plenty of tests at the state level. It's a little frustrating. I don't know where the disconnect is there, but they're not getting out where they need to get out to. Crewe Health and Wellness, we spent a lot of time consulting with them about this program. They recommended, just from a standpoint of, of, they're not quite ready for that. And, and really as a district, because of the supply and manpower, we're not ready for that. So they, they recommended we wait till January to try to roll that out if tests become available. We would like to roll that out in, in January. I think it will help with the quarantine situation. It'll provide a little bit of certainty. It's very difficult for a parent to hear their being, their child being quarantined and they're home for seven to 10 days and they don't experience any symptoms and they don't get any, anything going on. And then they come back to school and three weeks later, they're told they gotta quarantine again. That's very frustrating for a parent. I, I'm no longer a parent in the district, but I hear the frustration from people about the quarantine. And so this is a way to cut down on the amount of quarantines we have to make. It's also a way for us to, to keep our unvaccinated staff members in the building as well. As, you know, right now, if an unvaccinated staff member is exposed, they're quarantined. Vaccinated staff members are not quarantined, or students are not quarantined. With the Test to Stay, it applies to staff as well as, as students. So we can test them immediately, allow them to stay, test them again, day five to seven, and not have to quarantine our staff. So there are some benefits. There's some drawbacks. You know, it could become a, a big thing. And I don't know if we have the manpower to pull it off. with the school nurses we have and the secretaries and administrators trying to administer those rapid tests. It's just a matter of we'll try and see. We'll see what we can do. That's the update. Any questions? Diana, Diana?
I'm more of just a statement, just as a parent also, and recently my kiddo, because of family and stuff, was out for three weeks, was going to be four weeks and then six weeks. And so I'm just really grateful to hear that you understand the frustrations of the parents when these quarantines are happening, especially if a kiddo has been testing negative in other places and is not symptomatic. So I'm really glad that the district is is taking a look at this and and I'm looking forward to this being implemented. And I hope, you know, that it has a good success rate.
Yeah, thank you, Diane.
Okay, so the testing is on the sort of first day that is recognized and then process periodically for the first five, seven days, is that right?
There's one test immediately when you when you realize there was exposure. And then there's a test from day five to seven. Day five to seven is kind of that target range on when symptoms present. Yeah.
And I assume that parents would be able to opt in and out based on their
They certainly could, yes. Yeah, it's not a and that's the other difficult piece of it is trying to get out those those consent forms to parents, get them back, have them on file, so that when it does happen, we can do the testing. It's it's a it's a fairly complex, complex system that we would be undertaking. I think it's well worth well worth taking a look at. You can hear the frustration right there with with a parent. That's six weeks is a long, long time to be be operating from home.
Can I ask about the I mean, I understood you correctly, which is basically we're keeping things running, but we have to do it by sort of cannibalizing some work to help sort of support the sort of basic that we can't do. And and I think, I mean, probably many of us have been just reading and following along what's going on, not only here, but but everywhere around that. So I just, I just really wanted to say that I am in short my support, trying to find ways that we can be flexible and and accommodating when we can to to continue our operations, but also recognizing the stress that people under from from doing the work. And obviously, without employees and people doing the work, we don't have a school.
Oh, for sure.
I think, you know, kind of find, I recognize that's a hard balance between those I serve and support your efforts to try to find ways that when we can be flexible or give when we can and we do that. Given the fact that we still have to meet our instructional hours and those things as well. Yeah, I mean, I know at my work, we have the same struggle as as trying to find ways to balance out those two things.
I thought I could just add one comment. I just want to say that our employees are doing a really good job of wanting to work from home because a lot of our employees are parents and are not able to be at work because of the quarantines. And so they're offering to work from home and do what they can for the district. And it's really appreciated on all levels because they are doing double duty as parents and trying to be employees at the same time so that they don't, you know, burn up all of their leave and can still perform some of the functions of their jobs. So it's, you know, it makes it more difficult because they're parents and in quarantine because of classrooms and missing work, then that employees, you know, affects their employment. But they're really, really trying hard to make sure that they're still meeting the requirements of their job, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, Michelle. Any more questions or comments from the board for Brian? All right, thank you, Brian. Next up, I think we have Candace.
Oh, wait, were you going to go to policies?
Oh.
No, that was the district update.
I'm sorry, it looks like you are correct. Ryan, you had some more, you got some more pieces on there, I think.
Oh, okay. These policy ARs are are simple language changes to make sure that we get up to speed with the current laws and and changes from OSBA. There, there's nothing in here that's earth shattering or big changes. It's just addition of a word here, a word there to make sure we're covered. Questions about those two? I completely forgot about them. They go along with the first reads.
They're on the
On the other side. Yep.
So next move to the business services and finance updates. Candace, can you hear us okay?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
We can.
I have a new microphone, so I'm glad to hear that it works.
It works great. Sounds like it.
Okay, so to talk about our enrollment numbers first. This month's number, our total enrollment is three thousand sixty one. And to put that into comparison, last month, our enrollment number was three thousand seventy two, so we are down just a little bit. But if we compare that to where we were last December, our enrollment at that time was three thousand ten. So overall, we are up and and that is great news. If we want to, is there any questions about enrollment?
Candace, can you remind us again sort of what our pre-COVID enrollments were typically?
Yes, I I can. Just give me real briefly. I think we were we were over thirty one hundred, but I don't remember the exact amount. I can look that up real quick here. Okay, so in December of let's see, we'd have to go back to December of twenty nineteen in order to look at the same month. We were at thirty one fifty seven. So we are about a one hundred less from two thousand nineteen, December of two thousand nineteen.
Dusty, do you have those numbers? And those numbers, if you look at them, are primarily kindergarten level.
Yeah.
Those those lower elementary levels right now, we're just not seeing those numbers come back up. They're coming up a little bit. I think there's a hesitancy.
The parents are making different choices at that age of kindergarten about what to do. It sounds like we're good on that, Candace.
Okay. I I do think that it is worth pointing out that we are not including our pre-K numbers in this total enrollment count. But having pre-K in our district is going to be a benefit in the long run with these numbers. It would be my prediction.
I think Adrian has a question. Yeah.
I was going to ask, I was looking at the the class sizes, particularly over at Madison at the kindergarten level. They seem to be significantly higher than over at the Eastside School. And just if you know if we're doing anything for helping to support those teachers.
I think Brian would probably be best to answer that. My belief is that we have some extra EA support over there, but Brian can elaborate a little bit on that.
We've got fourteen point eight average at Eastside and nineteen point eight at Madison.
And we we actually reduced a kindergarten position at at Eastside as well. So those numbers are more accurate. They're they're more equal. We had to move a teacher into online instruction. And so we had to move a teacher out of kindergarten at Eastside. So those numbers are more accurate.
And Brian, we also, we also moved the teacher at Madison to preschool after the school year started because our preschool numbers and our slots went up for preschool promise too.
Did that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I noticed that too, that enrollment numbers look sometimes a little bit different from one school to another. Obviously, I know you always are, like you track with the grade level.
Oh, yeah. I would say, I would say there is one grade level of concern right now, and that's third grade at Sunset. Those numbers are fairly high right now, and we have a handful of third graders that are going to come back to the classroom from online after the semester break. So we may be in a position where we may be moving a teacher from online into the third grade classroom at Sunset. So we're watching that very closely.
It was a balancing act, isn't it?
Oh, boy. And it's not easy. I mean, when you're right there on the cusp and then, you know, you add it's hard.
Candace, I think we're good on that. Do you want to move to the, I think, the financials?
Okay. If we look at the November general fund by object report, you'll see that I updated this report just a little bit. I included totals for each object area so that you could see what we spend or have budgeted on salaries specifically and on payroll costs specifically. Same with purchase services, supplies and material. But what I wanted to point out on this was when you look at the total salaries, we budgeted fourteen point three million. And after our expenses through November and our encumbrances through the rest of the year, that leaves us a balance of just under five hundred and seventy thousand. And when you look at what we have spent to date on substitutes licensed and classified, which would be object one twenty one and one twenty two, we have spent three hundred and eighty eight thousand. So it's very likely that this budget balance of five hundred and sixty nine thousand will be spent on substitutes through the remainder of the year.
I guess that's not particularly surprising, is it, given?
No, not at all. No. But that's how close we budgeted for salaries. So that's we will be getting down to the wire on that. The other area that I want to point out is in the the four hundred objects, which is total supplies and material. We are actually over budget. But the reason for that is in object four eighty, which is our computer hardware. And Kevin was able to secure some E-rate funding for some hardware purchases. But we have to record the expenditure and the revenue from E-rate is going to be in revenue. So we will have the money for it. It's just that we have to book the expense properly. So that there will be a balance there. But what it looks like on the books is that we are, we are over budget. So I just wanted to point that out. If you look at object seven ten, which is our fund modifications, we had budgeted to move money from general fund to some capital projects funds, and I did that in November, so that is now at zero. And then our contingency, we had budgeted just over one point five million, and we have not touched any of that. Any questions on this report?
So if we run over on cost per substitute, would that, because that would come out of contingency then, right?
Well, not necessarily, because you can see that for object two hundreds, which is our payroll liabilities, we've got one point four million left in those objects. So we don't necessarily need to touch contingency. We do have other areas where there is money available. And again, this is just broke down by object, which isn't necessarily how the budget is approved. It just gives you a snapshot into how we are spending the money. Our next report is for all funds. It's the Statement of Revenue Expenditures and Changes in Fund Balance. And I do have a section highlighted that I wanted to point out in our special revenue fund, which is primarily our grants, some donation funds, our scholarship fund. I do not have the scholarship fund beginning fund balances in yet, which is close to six million dollars. So so the negative two point one million is not alarming. There, there is money there. I just do not have those entries made yet. But as of November thirtieth, our ending fund balance in the general fund is just over twelve million. And compared to last year at this time, that is about five hundred thousand less. So we really are pretty on track with our spending. Any questions on the financials?
Any questions, anybody? Questions from online folks, Kim, Diane? Candace, looks like not. So thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. That brings us to the board items. So the first that we have on the agenda is our superintendent search and tonight our attempt to try to figure out how we're going to come up with a screening committee election. So okay, thank you. Thank you. So there's passing around just a little survey that that we asked everybody to do. Again, this is completely up to us and us what we use with it or what we don't use with it. But I I thought it might be instructive just to kind of, as a first take kind of tabulate what the board figured from the selection committee, who is the sort of top choices. And, you know, Kim and I met informally just to kind of try to help direct us or give us some pre directions. Obviously, as a board, we can do what we want with it. Bottom line is Steve Kelly is part of the OSBA selection committee and advised us to try to select about twenty people beyond the selection committee. Bottom line is we have forty five people put in applications, about forty, forty three, forty five to the committee. And I said to him, I said, well, will we do this? He's like, I don't know. This hardly ever happens. And we have this many people interested in being a part of the superintendent selection committee. So I just want to thank everybody who has expressed an interest in doing this. Actually, I think it seems a little unprecedented that as many folks are interested in being part of this this process for screening. And I would assume it's because we've had a really great superintendent and everybody wants to make sure we have another really good one.
Let's hope so.
And so I think that's spirit of it. Everybody would like, there's a lot of people that would like to have some ability to have some say so in it. But again, we have forty five up there and, you know, the recommendation is about twenty. And remember, we are on it too, so that's another seven folks. So we're talking about twenty plus seven, so that's twenty seven folks that are on it. Now, if you guys recall, Steve did say, you know, you know, he was kind of, I think, spitballing a little bit about options. He said, well, you could take everybody and split them in half. And half could be a part of the selection committee and the other half could listen in on the interviews. And that certainly would be an option for the board to consider. Now, Kim and I were both, and I had said this to Steve, I was a little concerned about my initial, I think, self, and I think Kim was the same mind is maybe it would be better for us to have the same group that would be a part of this election that would then know the candidates and be a part of helping us get feedback on that. Having one group do one part and the other group do another part might not give us a great input in our consistencies of, of, of helping us make the process. That was my impression. I think it was Kim's, but the board may feel like, no, that's still what we wanna do. But we need to have some discussion on how we're going to figure out what the selection committee looks like and who's gonna be a part of it. And so, again, part of us taking a vote was trying to get us, we'll, we'll narrow it down a little bit about who we would have some common agreement about. So, uh, I'll just leave it open for discussion and, and argue.
If you count, well, either look on the list, if you got three or more votes, it comes out to about twenty.
Right.
What was that?
If you, if you count the people who got three or four votes, it comes out, I think, at nineteen.
Um, Sarah, do we have the same documents sent to us?
I'm sorry, I, I handed it out. I will email it right now.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Kim, Diane, yes, you guys need the same consideration probably, uh, in front of you that we have.
I, I just wanted to chime in and say I like the idea of the continuity, having the same group of people. I, I'm obviously very open to not doing that as well, but I, I do like that thought of having the initial people who go through the initial committee process and the interview process. It just seems like that's very streamlined.
Uh, I absolutely agree with that also. Um, yes, more informed is always better.
I mean, I, I think that's an option. If we decide to go with the same group, that's, that's fine. Then that leaves the process of, then we have to sort of pick and choose out of all the applicants. You know, if we did it the other way, wouldn't, we wouldn't have to have, to sort of make a choice in the same way that we, we have to make our own choice.
Yeah. Like I say, I think, and we could draw that line with math. Arnie kinda talked about that, but, um, yeah, that's, I think that's easily done also.
Any other, uh, thoughts about this, as, as, as sort of, sort of first cuts about how to approach this? Kevin, you have some?
Uh, sure.
So I was kinda worried going back, because we had, do have forty-five-ish people. And some of the names come out to me that I know they're just awesome people. Some of them are friends, and then there's some that I don't know, but they could be awesome applicants. And I would hate to skip them or not pick them, because I don't know them. So I was hoping at some point if we could even do just a little quick, you know, facial, like, here you are introduction type thing before we pick, which may be time-consuming, but I would feel more comfortable picking someone based off of little information rather than just a name or maybe my friend. That's where I'm at.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from on that. And then always just to keep in mind that we as a board kinda have a final say on everything, and we're, we use this group to help screen applicants. So I, as long as we've got a good, um, sampling of different staff from different areas in our district and some community members and some parents, um, from, we basically have a list of people who self-selected to apply. But as long as we sort of have a, a good breadth within that list, we're looking for people to help us, you know, this might be a red flag for somebody. This might be a red flag for parents, or this is a bonus for parents, or this is a bonus for staff members. Uh, and hopefully during that process, those are the things that we find. Uh, but just ultimately, it's up to the seven of us to make the decision. And you're right, there is the, there is the advantage of being a smaller community. I know a fair number of people on this list. There are a few people I have no idea who they are. Um, and we don't have a lot of information on here, but, you know, you look at a reason to participate. If somebody gave a, a pretty decent reason, "I'm involved in these groups, you know, this is, this is what I've done." When I was looking at the lists, you know, I tended to not consider people who had just moved into the area. Not that they don't have the skills to do the screening, but, uh, I remember during our last superintendent search process, that was something that was, that was very important. I mean, part of picking a superintendent is almost like a political decision, uh, because you're gonna have to answer to the members of the community and what their opinions are of the candidate. So somebody who's been around a lot longer is gonna be more in tune with those feelings of the community. So I, I understand where you're coming from. I don't think we really need to drag the process out a whole lot. Uh, you know, if there are a couple, three people you're interested in having on the committee who, you know, don't have any numbers by their names or their numbers are pretty low, um, you know, maybe we could, we could discuss that. But looking at who we picked, we've got thirty-three names and, uh, who, who kind of were sort of put forth by consideration for board members. And, yeah, but it might be an easier process just to will that down by thirteen and to do something else.
There are thirty-three that?
Thirty-three that have, so Sarah sent out the list.
Correct.
And asked us to pick sort of twenty off of that list.
Right. And so if you, if you count, there's thirty-three that have numbers next to them. Yeah.
As Arnie mentioned, if you take the ones that just have the higher numbers, there's about nineteen. You know, there's, there's a couple, I mean, there's some, I think towards the last page, there's a couple people have ones by their name, and I know there are, at least were in a family group, so.
Yep.
You know, if you pick one of those two, then you sort of have the same representation community-wise and, and skills-wise.
I have this sorted also based on their representation. So each, each shows, so you know if you have a certain amount of representation that you want.
Yeah, when I was looking at it, I, I felt half of them should be parents for other non-school people at least. Which is, so I'm happy to lose a nice bit of, a mix. It, it still comes unmix pretty well.
I did ask Steve about that, because I, I had said, "Well, you know, shouldn't there be more parents?" And things like that. He said, "Well, you have to recognize," he said, "at least how he said is, the board also represents the community and also represents parents." Or employees. So he said, "You really should add the seven to that side, because that's really what our job is." I, um, you know, and I, I thought, you know, I guess to me, in some ways it seems more objective not to interview or meet the people, because I don't really want to necessarily, I, maybe I shouldn't know too much about what they think or feel about it, because I want input that I wouldn't necessarily judge. And if, but if people gave me a little interview and I would say, "Well, I like their answer. I don't like their answer." And I almost feel like it's better not to have a whole lot of that and really just take it this way, because I, I don't, I don't wanna rule out people that, that may not fit my idea of, of, of what somebody should be selected. So I also felt like this brief, even though they're not, it was actually better just because for those folks I don't really know, and so I'm not, I'm making judgments based on nothing really. And it's more a random sample of people to help us with that process. So at least that was my thinking. And then just the logistics of trying to organize forty-five people to come in and speak for two minutes. Have we done it? Whoever had to do that job would not be happy with us, uh, I don't think. I wanna make sure, Diane, did you have a chance to weigh in as well? I, I don't, I don't remember if you had a chance to do that.
Um, I did, uh, send in, uh, my votes today, um, but I'm open to selecting. Um, it, can I clarify something, though? So there's twenty, and there's seven board members, so does that mean we need thirteen people from the list?
We need twenty, so adding to our seven. We'll have twenty-seven.
And then we'll have twenty-seven with us. Okay.
Yes. And, and I, I did think we could, depending on the numbers, we could select twenty, and we could select two or three alternates, because it is, there is a possibility that somebody is not going to be able to participate, and we could, you know, have a couple people that would be maybe willing to, to jump in at, at the last minute, sort of, if we needed it.
Can someone remind me of the timeline on this? I know we need to get these folks picked and notified and whatnot, and, you know, I was talking with, um, I was just, folks that, you know, have gone through this process before, and it, it is that trying to interview somebody in two minutes is just not, you're not gonna get that, get that done. It's gonna take about twenty-two and a half hours to even just get a few minutes in with each candidate. So I would not want that process. But I think Sarah said that it was also, she had it divided into the categories that we, you know, we wanted representation from different areas, making sure, uh, we had each of the buildings and we had, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion in there, and.
Maybe, uh, uh, if we can go through this, so, yes, it is broken down by community, by different categories. So, and, Arnie, you said if they were to use three votes and more, we got, yeah, three more, we got how many? So if I just kinda read those.
Oh, twenty-one.
So let's see. If I, if I read it, uh, out loud, so on the community members, we have one, two, three, four. On the front, front page that are community members with three or more.
Yeah.
Nods. I won't call them votes, because they're really not. And then on the, uh, second page, uh, which is district and teaching staff, I think, that's correct. Or is it just? Don't remember how this is.
That may involve, is mostly district staff, but one-on-one.
So on that second page, you have one, two, three, four, five on the bottom.
All district and one school.
Okay. And then on the next page, uh, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, which is a mix of mostly, uh, educators and administrator on it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Looks like we have elementary. And middle school and high school, which was a request to have that mix. So eight levels. On the next page, we have one, two.
And a little other.
There are little others, yep. And then on the next page, it looks like we're starting on the family. So we have one, two, three on that page. And then we have one on the following page. And then there's, and, and then that's it, I think. So it's one, four, five, six, twelve, seventeen, is twenty-one. So we would have twenty-one out of that, which, you know, if we wanted, we could pick twenty-one, and then we could call it good. But I also think Adrian's point too is that if board members feel strongly about, you know, a specific candidate, that we, you know, if I, somebody could bring that up.
The other thing I noticed, I didn't see classified people in our, in our.
I saw some intended advocates, uh, on there. I remember, because I was looking the same thing.
But I don't realize I classified anyone there in the group, so.
Yeah, in, in the past, the, our, our community, we would nominate someone. And this year, they just ask people to send in.
I see two on page two.
Yeah, there were a couple, I.
I know, they both.
Yeah, they both got four.
Okay.
No, that's.
Okay, then we're good.
So if I hear you guys right, we have twenty-one that have three or more votes from our committees.
Yeah.
Um, from our board members. So we wanted twenty for the group, and then we wanted a couple of alternates. Is that correct?
That was a suggestion. I mean, you know, we could go with twenty-one.
Twenty-one's fine.
And then, and then just call it good, and then if, if we do, you know, somebody drops out because they can't make it, then we might be down to twenty or nineteen. But again, these are, these are, these are folks that are supposed to help us with our process, so.
Because most of these people are just gonna get applications and go through them, and with representations, right? We're not getting in a room together.
That's correct. So, so how Steve outlined it, or the mistake is, he will train everybody together about how to go ahead and do the screening process. And then, and then we will be given, I think it's a non-line way to score, he'll, you know, figure out how we can, everybody can score them. And then out of that screening, we'll have the top applicants based on their, how everybody screened them. Then the second process is those folks also will be invited to sit in on the interview. They won't participate, but they can listen, and then they can help give us feedback based on their perception of the thought. So, yeah, there'll be actually two, two votes there.
Sold.
Go ahead, Diane.
Uh, yeah. Was there anybody on that list that, that got enough votes that was, um, special education or resource room or?
Yeah.
Someone that could represent that?
It was actually a really nice mix of folks from different areas and disciplines, including, yeah, special education, tribal, some of the diversity things, uh, so it really, I think, turned, it looked like to me is a really good blend of a lot of different mixes in our district, so.
Yeah, and most of the people who, who have a four or five next to their name have served in multiple roles fairly recently. Like, I know one is a, a new administrator who was a recent classroom teacher, also in special education and in various student groups, kind of thing.
Okay, great. Fantastic.
Yeah, I looked for specifically for that, Diane, in, in my search as well, and I know that's really important to a lot of us in the district, so I was, my focus in was looking at that as well.
Yes.
Yes. Also, that's, that's social programs, right?
Yes. Uh, any other discussion?
How, how you feeling about this, Kevin?
I think it is what it is, so I'm, I'm here with the eyes.
Okay. I was gonna say, if, you know, it, it would be kind of impractical to, to interview everybody. We could, you know, possibly send out a little email questionnaire and have that feedback back in in a relatively short amount of time, but.
We also have to meet again.
Yeah.
Prior to the January meeting, which is also, you know, so.
We do training. We wanna get the training done.
The training is, I think, scheduled for that January, or Jan, I think it's scheduled for our January board meeting, because then the, the task of the work is shortly thereafter, and, uh, so, yeah. So, you know, if there is no discussion, I mean, we could make a motion to approve the, the names as we've nominated here, and, uh, so.
I so moved, sorry, Arnie. I so moved to accept, uh, the system we have for our candidates for our screening committee and allowing us to go up to twenty-one to help us with our search.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Diane. If there's any other discussion? We already had it, but, uh, I'll go ahead and, and call for the vote on that if I can find my vote sheet here. Okay, Arnie?
Aye.
I'd vote as well. I vote aye as well. Kim?
Aye.
Uh, Kevin?
Aye.
Uh, Adrian?
Aye.
Uh, Diane? Diane looks frozen.
Oh, aye, I'm sorry.
I wasn't sure if you were. Uh, and then Dustin?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Should I read out the names for the record? Would that be helpful? I will, just so people can know also, maybe, uh, obviously we'll set up something formal. And I might butcher people's names, so I apologize for that in advance. Uh, so, uh, so our selection committee will be Rocky Place, uh, Ally McGeehan, Susan Walberg, Ida Jo Gates, Candace McGowan, Michelle Barton, Bree Landrum, Melinda Torres, Cara Davidson, Caleb Crook, Jody Seblon, Eli Ashman, Ashley. Eli Ashman, Ashley Caballero, Leslie Trailer, Laura Means, Josh Davies, Amelia Ed, Andrea Qualman, Michelle Caldera, Rebecca Rogoloski, Amy Springsteen. Did I hear to get everybody?
21.
And just again, thanks to all the people that put in their application and expressed their interest. I think we all greatly appreciate everybody's interest and focus on this and appreciate your, your efforts as we move forward, so... Okay, we got a few more things to do on our agenda. The next is board member highlights comments portion. I'll just go down the list. If people have something, they're welcome to say it. Otherwise, uh, that's okay too. Uh, Arnie, do you want to start?
Yeah, I have, I have, uh, there's two, three people here from the Marshfield Scholarship Committee who've done most of the work and they have a request that was committed in the beginning to ask for a change in the bylaws. It is our committee and so if Les wants to come, all three of you can come up so you know that they are... Les and Don who was really passionate as for the offensive concession, Jenna and Dr. Sharpless. And I'll talk a little bit about how much we have there, because we, Candace did talk about almost $6 million. I think it's over $6 million now, so we can talk a little bit about that. And also, the request is that we raise the amount of money we can spend for doing the work of the committee. And it has been, and they'll talk about what the limits were, so...
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of the board members who volunteer and do all the work that you've been doing all these years and we all appreciate that. Secondly, I want to say that, you know, our scholarship program brings a lot of positive things to our community. It causes attention and I hope that you all realize that it is our community and our school board who have initiated this scholarship committee, this program, and it operates under your auspices. And I, I hope that you will feel the same pride that we feel in all of our students who graduate from Marshfield, apply for a scholarship and then go on and we're able to help them with the funds that have approved through our program every year. And I don't know if you've gotten a handout on the amounts of money, but the amount that we have invested at the Oregon Community Foundation is right at $7 million. And not included in that is the Bureau and Bureau of Victor Scholarship, which is not invested as a part of our program, but it, it, it is at Oregon Community Foundation and it is, is right at $3 million or a little bit more. And it has an annual award of $15,000. It's a four-year scholarship, $15,000 per year. And so if you add that, $3 million plus with the $7 million that is in our program, we're looking at $10 million in endowed funds that go to our students every year. So you can feel proud that you are a part of that program, that you oversee that program. And through the help of our Candace and her department up here, we're able to track those funds and, uh, and keep track of all the students and, and the money that they get each year. So you were introduced to Cap, Sharpless and Jenna Sutherland. They have been a long time assistants. We, uh, we've all always called ourselves the subcommittee, but recently we thought that maybe wasn't a, uh, an appropriate name. Maybe a steering committee would be more appropriate. We meet monthly, if not more, and do the cleanup work 12 months a year in trying to keep, uh, the scholarship program shipshape and, and make sure that the students are all continuing on with their education as they lay out in their application to make sure that they continue to, uh, live by those criteria that they were selected for. So we have another member of our group that is a paid position. It started out as just, it's going to be a flat rate and, uh, at $2,000 a year. And our committee and, and the board initially gave up with a $4,000 figure so that we could publish an annual newsletter, have it printed and mailed. And along with that, we could have some clerical help in keeping track of those kids. It's quite a bookkeeping challenge to track those kids. Once they graduate, a lot of times their parents will pack up and move. They've been waiting for their, their last one or their student to graduate so that they can move or whatever and they, they tend to leave town and, and we lose track of them. So our clerical person is tasked with keeping track of those kids, making sure that they get the paperwork back to us, their college addresses, their emails, their text, texting numbers and that kind of thing. And then making sure that they get the transcripts back to us in the spring so that we know that they're continuing to be successful in what they said they were setting out to do. So way back when, that $4,000 has grown a little bit thin and we asked that maybe we increase that to $5,000, up to $5,000 for our administrative tasks. And so we, we hope that the board will make that change to our bylaws from $4,000. That would be the $2,000 for the clerical and $2,000 for our newsletter and other expenses, mailing, envelopes and that kind of thing. And so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to clear them up at this point.
Well, I guess I'd kind of make a comment. Um, the, the statement that it takes community to raise a kid is, is very cliche, but, um, you are definitely part of that community and make a difference in all of the lives that these, these kids who receive scholarships get. Uh, if you've never been to the, uh, the event, the, what am I missing? The presentation, the worst presentation. It is a spectacular showing of our community. Uh, it's just lovely and I highly recommend it to anyone who hasn't been, uh, because it is just, it's, it's, it's special. And it's important and it's a very prideful moment every time I go, for myself and the people around me. So, uh, kudos. Thank you.
Any, any other questions or concerns?
So I'd like to make a motion that we increase, increase in the bylaws from $4,000 to $5,000, the amount of money that we spend on administration of the costs, if that's appropriate at this time.
Yeah, and if you guys look in the air, the, the language is actually in here in, in the, the presentation, which would say the, the language and then just changing from $4,000 to $5,000.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Kevin. So we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Call for a vote on that. Arnie?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Kim?
Aye.
All right, Kevin?
Aye.
Uh, Adrian?
Aye.
Uh, Diane?
Aye.
And Dustin?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll just make one last comment. It wouldn't happen and, and I was principal when this all got started and I, I can't express how much gratitude I have for the three people standing here as well as the other members that have been on that committee for a long, long time, including the work that Candace does over here to keep track of it and the committee foundation. Because if people didn't know, we didn't belong to the committee foundation first. We set our own and then we tried to keep managing that money and we finally decided through attorneys and others that we'd better build a committee foundation. That meant we had to get a sign up by everybody that had given money that it was okay to do that. And, and people, they did all that stuff to make sure that we have this ingrained in a, in a institution that gives us about 4.5% of our investment back each year for scholarships. And it is amazing to watch a group of community people come together and look at all these scholarships and get put together, uh, packets and material and then figure out how they're going to award all these different scholarships. And the groundwork is laid by this steering committee and, and it makes it work, but it's really a pretty amazing thing. And I, um, I'm really proud of the fact that it got started. I'm really proud of these people. And if there's people out in the community who are watching this who would really like to get involved, uh, because we're not going to be around forever. And we're always looking for people who would like to be a, a member of it and get ahold of Les or Cap or Jenna. Um, and we know that there's a retired superintendent that's got a lot of time on hand and we have a lot of other people who have some real great relationships with our community that would be outstanding on this committee, so...
No pressure.
I didn't know that was going to be with love right there. She's got my first job.
We haven't heard that Brian is too good with spreadsheets. All right, well, if there are no further questions, I want to thank the board and I would invite you to go to our website, which is marshfieldalumni.org. Our website is, our webmaster is Gary Holiski, who thankfully does a great job in constructing and maintaining our website. But on that website, you might want to look at the last couple of years. We did not have a, an awards assembly like we have had in all those years previously. So we did a virtual awards presentation and it was presented, uh, on, and it's still available on, uh, from our website. You can click on the link and go watch the entire, uh, the entire thing narrated by Floyd Montiel.
Yeah, we did have a parent-only one last year.
Yes, we did, we did have a watch party at 7:00 in the auditorium. We were able to get, uh, every recipient and they could bring two parents and maintain spacing throughout the auditorium. And we projected the, uh, the awards presentation on a big screen in the auditorium. And I have to say that I, I am impressed, but the reaction that we got from kids and their parents in support of one another, it didn't matter if the scholarship was $750 or $7,500. They were very, very, uh, e- easily, they, they just supported each other so much. A, a couple of times I was brought to tears at just the camaraderie that they showed at that, that meeting. So, uh, anyway, I would encourage you to, to watch that. And hopefully this year, we might be able to be back in the auditorium, but if not, uh, we'll be doing a similar slideshow presentation.
And the other thing is, was impressive, a few years ago, um, one of our alumni decided he wanted a vocational scholarship. So there's a section, I don't know how much of it, that is vocational scholarships that come every year. A critical, um, why can't I think of these names?
It, it's 1.5 million now and Chuck Carlebaum, class of 52, uh, called me up and, and he had been a donor to our scholarship program prior to that, but he called me up and wanted to know what scholarships we had specifically for Volk Tech. And I told him, well, we have a few that do allow for Volk Tech, but they aren't specifically for them. And he said, well, my goal will be to, uh, build an endowment of a million dollars at least. And until that gets endowed, we will not award from that corpus of that fund until it reaches that minimum. And he said, uh, and I have some friends in the business community who will, uh, help us by giving a cash donation every year so that we... Uh, one of his fellow, well, his class of 47, but he was an acquaintance, Jim Ricky, chipped in, uh, 10,000 to 20,000 every year until that Volk Tech fund reached a million. And, uh, so it, it was a good thing to do. We really appreciated that. Chuck and Jim are both on now, but, uh, we really appreciate all he did.
Well, thank you for all your, your work, hard work and, uh, and I, I know we as a board appreciate it and I know the students, uh, have great benefit from it. And it is, it is quite fun to be there and, uh, and enjoying the celebration with all those graduates, so...
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other highlights, uh...
No, no, and I think we aren't, Jim, that's this year relatively, but I, I have been on the committee most of the time and I did one of those, let's say, I was a member. So I've been doing it for a long time and I appreciate it. And the number of local people who have donated to individual endowed scholarships. You know, we have one for my son and I think there's a whole bunch of other people in our community who have in memory of different people. It, it, it's really an interesting thing about our community. The first million dollars that came in was from a person that won the lottery. It's in the honor of his sister who didn't go to college to help raise his because his parents died and, uh, he wanted to give something back. So he gave a very large scholarship very early on. He, he won the lottery very late in life, so he was able to give some money. So it's been interesting to watch that.
Hi, Karen. Uh, we will combine the items, the board highlights with the item, uh, other items. Uh, Kevin, do you want to talk a little bit about the facility committee? And then, and then any other highlights or things you want to add?
Sure, uh, so a mean or two back, we had a request for proposal in relation to our Crown Point property that was sent out for the approval of the board. And our finance director, Candace, is appointed contact and has established a timeline process and published it on various platforms. And, uh, the facilities committee has received a completed proposal from Joe Aguirre with Pacific Properties. And I have that information here if anybody wants to review it. The timeline that was established is for today to take a vote on it. And, uh, so if anybody has any questions about the, the proposal that we received, I could answer those.
So is it the committee's recommendation that we approve?
Yes. It, the, it's a seven pager and it met all the requirements that Candace had established.
Uh, any questions for Kevin around the naming of the agent for the Crown Point property? So that, that the only proposal received?
Correct.
Uh, so, uh, would entertain a motion to approve, to accept the Mill State Consultant Broker Services, Joe Aguirre?
I will move.
I'll second that.
Uh, any other discussion on the motion? Uh, a vote, Arnie?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Uh, Kim?
Aye.
Uh, Kevin?
Aye.
Uh, Adrian?
Aye.
Uh, Diane?
Aye.
And Dustin?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Kevin. Did you have anything else you wanted to add in terms of highlights? Okay. Uh, Kim, do you want to go next on the policy committee?
Sure, um, first on board member highlights. I just wanted to give a shout out to our drama teacher at Marshfield High School as well as the choir teacher. And I know that they're in the midst of their choir concert right now that my kids wanted to go to. Um, but I've, I got to see a little bit of them in action and working with students and I think they're doing a fantastic job. And, um, I'm like really excited for the upcoming play and, um, I'm bummed that I missed the choir concert, but duty calls. So I just wanted to give a shout out to both of them. And then as far as policy committee, we've met a few times and we have a number of policies to go over. We have, you see, um, quite a few in first readings that are really just grammatical and name changes to a lot of them. Like Brian was saying, um, we have a second review for, um, public participation in board meetings where we're adding in new language to support virtual meetings. language to support virtual meetings and input. And then we have language added for gender identity and a number where we moved from he and she to more appropriate terms. Then language updated to reflect provisions affecting reporting child abuse and sexual conduct. So those are our first readings and then we have a few that were in the second readings. Let me see if this is our right. Just the one. There it is over here. Second readings were the corporal punishment, JGA, and then our one that we wanted to adopt. Our third reading is the BFC adoption revision of policies.
So can I clarify, Kim? Our agenda says that there's two adoption requests. Is that not correct?
Oh, yes, because our second reading and adopt was the JGA. Looking it up on my chart here. Yeah, that was simple because it just moved it into what we have to do anyway. So by the ORS through 39, so just brings it in line with the law. So that was easy. We don't need to go out there again. So two for reading and adoption.
Any questions for Kim? So then somebody wants to make a motion on the adoption of the two policies?
I'll move that we adopt policy JGA, corporal punishment, and policy BFC, adoption and revision of policy.
Thank you, Adrian?
Say it.
Thank you, Dustin. Any other discussion? And then on the motion, Arnie?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Kim?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
And Dustin?
Aye.
Let's see, that moves us to the other, I'll go ahead and save the other act item for last, but Adrian, any highlights or things you want to share?
Yes, I actually had the opportunity to attend the band concert, first band concert in approximately two years. It was well attended even though the sizes of the ensembles were a little bit reduced from a couple of years ago. The crowd was very, very enthusiastic for everybody involved. It was, it was really nice to see. We do have a strong tradition of quality music programs here in the South Coast, so it's good to see that coming up in our youngsters.
Diane, anything from you on the highlights or things that you want to share?
Sure. I was able to attend the, it's the Loan Committee for people in the Kusby School District and the alumni, so that was very interesting, not as elaborate and cool, I guess, as the Scholarship Committee, but it was very interesting and they just wanted to put a reminder out there that this is available. They don't get a lot of applicants, so they want to really encourage students who may need some funding outside of scholarships to apply. And I know there's been some teachers that have returned to school for additional education who have used the loan program, so they just wanted to put a reminder out there and it is really a good program if you don't have any other resources because of the interest rate and the flexibility and the payment plan's back, so. And then just really quick, I wanted, I believe I'm on the Facilities Committee, so I apologize that I haven't made any of those meetings, but I'm not aware of if there's been a meeting or there are meetings. I haven't received an invite or where I can get that information of when those meetings are happening.
Can somebody from the Facilities Committee, are you on it also, Kevin? I was like, we'll get you on the email list, Diane, if you're not already on it.
Perfect, yeah.
Thank you. Dustin?
Oh, I had just been the local sports champion. Attended the state finals game, was magical and spectacular and super fun to watch kids be successful. That being said, you'll probably see me at the girls' basketball games and girls' and boys' basketball games these days and it's just fun to be involved. I often call it the best show in town on a Tuesday or Thursday or Friday night, whenever the local sports teams are playing. I encourage people to go out and be a pirate, I guess, once pirates were pirates.
Thank you. This is pretty cliche.
I didn't turn my mic on either, sorry.
All right, and just, I've been going to the site council at Eastside, so it's been interesting just hearing what they're working on and I kind of mirrored some of the things that we were talking about earlier about level of stress and kind of balance out all the things that are on their plates and balancing teachers and vacancies and filling in and that whole process about trying to, you know, keep the schools open, so I really appreciate that. And then I've been able to, periodically I work right by the Madison School, so it's been fun to kind of go over there and sit and watch the progress and the walls are going up, the front taking shape and so you can really start to see what it's going to look like, which is, which has been fun, I think, for making good progress. Hopefully they're on track, but you probably know better than I do, but it looks like, it looks like they're on schedule, so.
They're on schedule. Terry's library is coming together.
Yeah. We all fancy over there. And then just on the final action item is the MOU is in our packet and is on our action item to approve the MOU for the OSEA. You guys recall, most of the time the board doesn't get involved in MOUs, but this was, it had more stuff in it and it had some additional benefits for employees and so there was a request the Negotiation Committee met with OSEA for, I don't know, we met three or four times at least and it sort of hammered out an agreement, which is in your packet. And I would say that a lot of what contains is really things related to COVID primarily. I think that's really what it is, is about creating some protections for bargaining members around, not only things that are protections, but also things that we need to do to keep our district safe. There's some allowances for more leave time and some benefits for all covered employees if they get sick related to COVID and some provisions around, you know, working remotely and job duties and things like that. So I think it was a very productive set of meetings with that. I think, you know, a little cradle of our meetings, they're going to start probably soon in the spring, but and I would say too, I would guess from hearing Brian, maybe a bit of a template for an MOU of the teachers as well, to some degree. So that might be expected as well.
Coming down the line.
At some point too, so. Myself was on it and Arnie was on it and Adrian was on it, so if there's any questions about elements of it, we're certainly, I think, happy to try to answer them. Otherwise, we would probably afford a motion to approve the MOU tonight.
I don't think the union already has.
They've already signed it.
Yes, well, we've ratified our part of it.
And so then I would move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the Kusby School District and Oregon School Players Association, Chapter 33, regarding the implementation of OAR 333-019-1015 and OAR 333-019-1030.
I'll hold a second.
Thank you. We neglected to give that a short title.
Next time.
All right, we'll just follow the vote in the same order then. Arnie?
Aye.
I vote aye. Kim?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
And Dustin?
Aye.
All right, you all, that concludes our business tonight.
Oh, one last thing. OSBA, a few years ago, when the Student Success Act was happening, they filmed us all over the state doing it and they put out a film. They're doing a follow-up to see what's happening around school districts and they chose Kusby to be one of those follow-up sites and so they had a crew here at Eastside Elementary. I was invited over to talk as well and interview, so we'll, there'll be something coming out in the near future. I don't know when, but Brian may know that too.
I haven't heard of him yet.
Okay. And since you mentioned it, I also got to go to the Site Council, meaning for Madison, which was a very good meeting. I was very impressed, so I appreciate that too.